Evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the in for the committee of the whole meeting for February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. Like to note, we have Mayor Smoak, Council Orbiter offer and City Manager Anthony McGinnis on Zoom, and we have regrets tonight from Council Fitzpatrick. I would like to recognize that we are on treaty five territory, traditional territory of N C M and the homeland of the Mayatee, and that we're all treaty people. I will look for an approval of the agenda. Council Lundmark. Council Coburn, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. I will look now to number four in the agendas are community comments and feedback. If anybody has any, and we do have one that just been online also. Do you have any community comments or feedback?
Ron Monitor, what are you out of screen? At the last meeting I attended, your Director of Gallowland stated that majority of the properties zoned as urban hold is held by the city. Of the remainder, I was wondering how many are owned and how many are leased?
Okay, thank you. We'll have somebody get back to you with the comment for that, with your answers before the next meeting. Okay, seeing no others, we're going to move on. We have under reports, number five. We have the R C M P, then we have Shane fun again, I believe the staff sergeant, but if I'm wrong, correct me?
You're correct.
I am correct.
Two documents go over tonight. Being year end. Seven thirty first of August, just from the month of January, and we're going back on twenty twenty two. We're seeing an increase in the majority of calls for service in January. Most likely equated to the warmer weather than we experienced last January. Increases in almost every aspect of it, with the exception of impaired driving. But an increase everywhere across public disorder calls. Um, the few items of notes. When you have the officer P J S section, we did a firearms investigation. So in order about firearms, we've never heard it's offset. I think to be able to spell out on that. Yes, you know, media. Public relations side. Participating this month, I was like on yellow three month and all schools here in New York. And they continue to see the activities. In this group recognition, we had several of our junior options. Alongside some methods of the North District. As far as our year annual priorities, which is what we had wrapping was up for the twenty three. In the next few months, it should be available the next next meeting or definitely before April, which is our fiscal. Still critical as far as resources when it comes to our staff development, for the ninth position being built. And we are, we have three vacancies within the organizational structure currently, which is were notably good shape compared with the rest of the province. Compared to the rest of the very provinces or reserves and goals. Now I'll just switch back to review of twenty twenty two. For a lot of these, with the increases in January, they may be contradictory to the overall numbers in twenty twenty one. And as I explained, we had a warmer than almost January, but there again, it's only one month, twenty twenty three, compared to twelve months here in twenty twenty two, so. It's been sway the other way. Main talking points, so increases deaths. Where we saw decreases were persons crimes, very small. Relatively the same, but significant in the sexual assaults and impaired driving. Vision for down. And mental health was down as well, mental health calls which are mostly significant decrease of the on the prison if you watch early in the week this year. And that can be attributed to the opening of the giving center as well. Oh, toxic can continue to drive the majority of the calls for service here. And then obviously the violence, prison crimes, all that. And that obviously wastes in the item. Transferrity index that Thompson traditionally had. When we compare the growing sort of last five years. That seemed to be trending down. Assaults and mental health. Calls for service are obviously trending up. The public disorder, totally unchanged over the past five years. Cars for service and reduction of the turnout, and that can also be attributed to the C S O program as well. System itself was in downtown where area. Over, over the year of twenty twenty two, you participated in twenty three community events. Twelve year old events. Well, as the participation from our public community relations at the breakfast spot programs across the community. Store walkthroughs, lockdown drills. To ensure fairness in case of emergency, and the main driving member behind that is very possible. We received and these are through our grant applications for our public relations, just shy of fifty thousand dollars. You know, breakfast bar. And Albert cultural program, Yard of Garden, Agent High School. So that was twenty twenty two, we made in seventeen grant applications for twenty twenty three. These are through the air, no civil forfeiture funding, as well as the family violence funding initiative to the province, so we're hopeful that towards summer, we'll see similar amounts. Continue funding some of these activities, to all seventy ones that we identified. Mental health hours, the costing. And that's just through May through December was in excess of fourteen thousand dollars. And that, there again, tracks the overtime dollars associated, you having a police officer at Thompson General. Profit related. Sixteen hundred past notices in the city. Bringing immediate roadside prohibitions, that's the decriminalized, fair driving, passes now in the province, as well as criminal driving. That's really good for driving and drugs, you know, give or take with roughly a hundred people. A hundred drivers. In the community. Significant check stop program in December, on holiday season, I think one night there was over a hundred and thirty roadside breath samples. Taken from members, but absolutely nobody feeling or even seeing one, that was good to see, definitely. It was definitely an increase, and you'll see that in the trend, the recent impairs. Then people are obviously be responsible, they're driving up all the seasons. Definitely a problem. Apparently it's twenty twenty. We're adequately staffed through twenty twenty two, as I just indicated, we do have three vacancies now related to anticipated traffickers, but majority of twenty twenty two, you're adequately staffed. And there's some significant stress or time resources throughout the year as we did deal with bi homicides. That's all notes. But you have any questions? There again, like I said, the overall year statistics will differ from January of twenty twenty. There again, it's only one twelve, the representation. Your end of work, so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask council, council one.
Thank you, Deputy. Uh, thank you for the report, and I want to ask a question about this assault. Looks like there's a big group of assault always categorized as for the last few years, so do you guys have those the data about like, what is all majority related to? Is it alcohol, drugs? Or just let us over the like a punch someone in the face and things like that?
No, it's a majority of them are definitely fueled by a substance abuse. Personally, and there's a large amount that are domestic in nature as well. Or a combination thereof, substance abuse, alcohol, and best in nature. Realistically, you don't go into a lot of assault complaints where both the victim with a certain complaint. Are so. That's just to be out the other. Unfortunately, obviously that works in reality, so a majority of the market.
Okay, thank you. How many common charges based on the following, do you guys? Well, I just put you for the category.
Yeah, I could definitely get those stats here, I'm just looking here, there's.
Yeah, I have the number, but I can certainly get those as far as how many criminal charges that you're asking related in those instances. But one of the reason I asked this because it looked like there's a significant flaw related to this particular gender. So cost a lot of resources from you guys to take care of it. So the end result, I'd like to know, is that a lot of charges lay against that? Or you're just kind of like costing you time and no, no other action output?
No, this would be a significant crime grouping where the most charges resolve. As opposed to maybe a public disorder, like a crime group. You know, obviously, we don't have a lot of discretion when it comes to first strikes, especially domestic violence.
Anyone else, City Council, Council McFlaver? Thank you. Um, the question I have, twenty twenty two, you have five, almost ten. But twenty one, there's none. But if we're still rated as murder capital. Where did that come from?
I think that's a term that if he uses.
Yeah.
You were second, transferrity index twenty twenty one, I believe. As opposed to traditionally you were first. Now the twenty twenty two results in your bag, obviously, right? What the transferrity index of twenty twenty two looks like, not sure, I imagine it'll be a short bit. There will all of it, and there I will. But yeah, as far as the murder capital, that's a, that's immediate here, where they get it from.
And then from January to April twenty twenty one, it says that our crime rate is up by forty five percent by year average. And I'm going to still make it still doesn't calculate where, why are we still number one or two in the home is? This one is for four months. And it's, it went up four forty five percent, and then we're still, we have no homicides in prison, five homicides. And then just going back to your report here, the the violent hotspots are supposed to be east, eastward and Princeton towers, Princeton Drive. But it's, like I asked the last time, we didn't get a report on that, on where these these reports are coming from. Is it from eastwood, is it from westwood, you know, Riverside area, that, those are the numbers that I requested to see. Where the crime is coming from. Because, and then we didn't get the report from the first guy that came in to bring their report. But it's definitely, I'd still like to know where the reports were the highest. Instead of just say eastward and Princeton.
Well, there is, there's mapping software available, we don't have access, we have access to, we don't have it obviously, at Thompson, but ironically, I just requested a report containing to that. To support another initiative we're working on, so we can certainly get that. I will make the request tomorrow, considering where I'll see it here tonight is under the weather, but we'll certainly request it, and hopefully we'll have it for next meeting. And it's basically, it's called like a hotspot mapping, is what they'll basically show, and then you basically build it out based on crime assaults, public disorder, and it will be significantly different depending on the primary basis, but it'll give you an idea with where within the city of Thompson, they're kind of.
So. Go ahead, and then doing reading of that because I asked. I had one of my friends pick me up at six back doors. And I did, and then all of a sudden I go, I seen the police lights come on and I'm like, oh, I better move, right? So I moved it right, and you're behind from me and that, right? And I'm like, what did I do? And you know, it's like, oh my God. You know, and was, yeah, I see you come from T I vendor. And I wait, is that a crime? You know, and then it's where I'm like took my license and everything and that, and then I said, here. I didn't even see him sitting there, and I'm like, and I mean, how did you know I came from? So I'm like, that's why I want to see the numbers, where they come from, and it is reflect all these percentages, and because I was stopped, was I a statistic in there?
No, I think you were stopped, it was just basically an inter driving deduction, right? So I don't know whether you had an instant hat or got sample of homicide. Obviously, but was this this month or last month or recently?
January.
Denver, so.
But that's what I said, that's what I need, it's like, I don't know, it's no it's no, um um, pointing fingers at anybody, but like me, I felt like I was profiled and take you, just because you came from a T I vendor. Or is your license? Or is he your driving driver? But my hair was a mess and everything. Oh, I'm going, maybe it should have pulled my ears off. Still, that's not the point is I felt then that, that I was profiled. And I'm going, why? Why did you stop me? Or there's, and there was a bunch of people, like twenty people out there. They're arguing, they're laughing and all that, and I drove away and the one that's, that got stalled. And it's where kind of I have to rent my truck because it car, because there's a lot of people over here, and I was scared then.
Obviously, I didn't.
Yeah, just.
If I ever do, I'll know.
Thank you, thank you. Our Charles Corber?
Thanks for your report. Uh, my question is, you said about you got a lot of domestic assault this time. You think that cuts off do with the delivery of alcohol?
What do you mean delivery?
Well, yeah, actually, I think it was sold down like we canceled the delivery of alcohol. That helps drive in that area?
Like reduce sales or eliminate sales or?
The delivery.
Like on that app where you can order liquor, is that what you're talking about, Council Corber?
Okay, you can phone up and, and order liquor, right? Now I would say at least a percentage of the assault at all, domestic assault, may be contributing to that.
Right? Yeah, I am not ruling that out, I don't know how we could track that.
Yeah.
As far as what's being delivered, what's being purchased in person, there is vendors here. It makes it obviously really more excessive.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
But I don't know how we draw that correlation. Counselor, to, to really delve into it, like if there, if it's related to like increased staff, might have to, might have to ponder that and see how it actually all works, and then and if we even have access to those records, right, we need it to make that correlation, it would be very tough.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I appreciate what I have. It's part of leading to the delivery of liquor.
But well, it's something that I'm personally against. Yeah, we never do with myself. I've never done. But I don't believe in that bringing alcohol to people that are vulnerable to crime. And ninety percent of the times, the area people are ordering it. Because they don't have a chance to date, but then you give this good thing, they're not driving, you get their alcohol and they're impaired. That's the thing, you can't like you said, start to track that.
It would be very hard to track, and I don't know if you're aware, but the province of Manitou that is allowed to increase licenses now for convenience stores and everything else to carry certain amounts of alcohol, and I think it's kind of on a location basis. So all the provisions that were put in place as far as the festivals and all the, the M L C C, the province, with Thompson being one of the last ones to get one here to last add here. It's good to negate those security measures now, and you can go do a convenience store that doesn't have those versus a certain kind of alcohol, so how that's going to play to grind, I guess, we'll wait and see.
Well, I grew up with that new land. Run to any foreign store, you can run the case of your, any, thank you.
Let's see if it be trending out again.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else, Council McFlaver? Just going back to girls in their delivery thing, you know, it'd be stuff, each, any liquor store, and I would have to share, right? They can go home and get their kid. Whatever seventeen or whatever, or age to order, but, um I would forget. But, uh when they order their booze. And maybe one time I went, I was at Safeway, and this guy was buying this drink. And I'm like you know, he's going to drink that. Beats going to court. I thought that where are you? Where it was like? You know, instead of sport? I don't want to go to court.
I think most businesses in the community, that's something I want to keep a record for, so most all washed now is alcohol, but it's actually being the virtual spirit. Everything else is here a lot, so. So, but then they get there again, that's business, it's up to them to put the safeguard in place, there's no legislation or law say they have. Yeah, it's cheap, cheap way to get confiscated, so. We push that, we need the business owners and everything else, like I said, a majority of our, we're going to delve the alcohol based stuff. Same time, fortunately, yeah, for this.
Just for council, for new council. So the year end now for the R C M P report, so they will work on the priorities kind of based on that information, and they will present that to mayor and council with their priority will be for twenty twenty three, so it's something to think about, because their priorities need to align to ours as mayor and council, and I think that is marked through April. By senior or acting manager, Anthony McGinnis has his hand up, so I'm going to put it.
Yeah, so you're correct, Deputy Mayor, so the, the R C M P will be looking for direction from council and priorities. But hearing some of the comments and concerns about alcohol sales, just to remind council that you are able to regulate business as well as business hours. So some of these proposed changes to how liquor is sold is something that you could potentially create a bylaw on. And I believe that you'll see in the Community Wellness and Safety Plan, that under the Integrated Alcohol Management Subcommittee section, there are an area for council and the community to develop policies around the sale of liquor and other intoxicating substances.
I have a few things also from the report. So under the year end report, I don't see the community safety and wellbeing plan mentioned at all. I know in the past, the inspector was the co-chair, so, so I think that need to be identified, if this is going to be a community document. Because it's community owned safety plan, so I didn't notice that that was missing. The other comment on the mental health hours of the fourteen thousand dollars. That that the mental health hours ever at the hospital. Can we have the hours that reflect the fourteen thousand dollars, because for the public, it's the hours of not having an R C M P member on the streets or near vehicles that they're sitting at the hospital, I guess the dollar amount is for us. But I think the hours would be a little bit more for the public awareness on that. And there was also a comment that the North District is in conversations with health authority on getting the institutional safety officers, and wondering if we can get an update on where those conversations are at. That's something I've been lobbying for a long, long time. And the other thing, do you feel that? And I can't remember what bill it is, I'm thinking maybe it's Bill forty seven or whatever that federal where everyone has the right to bail. And they're thinking that people are going in and out quicker, is that indicated in our stats? You think like, is it one person doing forty break dances, just using numbers? Like, does that not make our, our stats, I don't know, like a real number, because it could be one person, because this right, because everyone has that right to bail?
Like an individual better?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Based on what I've seen. That appear, and I think I alluded at another I can hear the one, we, we did have an influx of breaking enter one month, and it was particularly a few persons that, that went out to break enters free at the various and inflated the discs up way more than previous months, so you had that spike. What I can say as far as the bail. And we don't obviously have, we determine as well, that's the ground attorneys obviously, and of course, that deal with that. It, it really is a case by case basis, dependent on the severity of the crimes. Higher criminal record. If they're already on bail. There's a lot of factors that they take in, criminal. But I would say in Thompson, what I've seen very seldom to people get released from, on bail. Back into the community and, and re event.
Okay.
Now that isn't one hundred percent of the time. But I think our Crown's office does a very good job here. They're working within the constraints of the law that they have. So, and I don't speak to that, like what I see, Simon Harry, you're at. How would measure that? It would have to be something we have to do with, with the ground attorney's office, because we don't have access to that, like anything, I don't even know how we filter that. Just picking out the top of my head. But I will say that you, that you do a very good job here. We can certainly recommend, so we'll be held in custody, but there again, there's just rates of the law, damn it, we're free. And there are lawyers, but I can just get the evidence to them, and they make that determination, so. Yeah, I, I do have a meeting this, this year, so that's something I sort of.
Yeah, I can't think of what the bill number is.
I think it was fifty eight.
Is it fifty eight?
Okay, so, so I'll talk, I can be. So, yeah, the, the bail changes, yeah. Yeah, different straits, they are very. But yeah, so I'll bring up to this here ground, and see if there's a way to that for that.
Perfect, thank you. I think that's all I had on my end, anybody else have anything? The other thing is to remember, council, that you do have a lot confidential report on this. So to be aware of that, and then you're going to go into the C S O report, which I'm very happy to see is with the two of you together, because these programs really do run together, even though they are two separate programs. I, I give a value in both, and I can tell you during these last six weeks in the province, that there's a lot of talkable C S O programs. And justice is actually going into communities and doing presentations on it. They're big supporters of it, a lot of communities are looking at bringing in current bylaws, so they're weighing the closing concept of both. So I, I think this is great that it's kind of under one heading, and that the two of you are working together on this, so. I'm assuming, Sonya, that you're going to use the C S O report? Go ahead, thank you.
So we're currently splitting the three C S Os, we are actively trying to recruit more. We've done some testing, unfortunately, we haven't been successful. So currently with the three, we're working roughly around six hours a day, roughly, the R C M P, we're trying to vary our shift size, we have the working some weekends, if it's a long weekend, and we go, there should be a lot of people in town. There might get scattered, the township, and a lot of picture of yours. And it kind of makes things up, so people don't really know what their schedule is, going quite well. Their main calls right now, we're noticing, are in the Walmarts, the historic area, so they're no longer, they'll have a scattered one. Probably over where the old, old the show. Probably over where the old uh, old shelter was. Um, but their most of their calls are really in around that area. Uh, they did assist the R C M P um, in December with the uh, traffic sobriety stop, I think it was only about dollars, so they did a set. Um, so I I haven't learned, I don't know, there's separate in January, um, so their transports, um, so they're not just transferring under I P B A. You notice that number, you're still, they still transfer it about fourteen in December and thirty seven in January. Uh, most of their calls are happening. Our transfers are happening at the healing center. So they're bringing a lot of people, uh, in December, they have sixty three, and in January, they have seventy one individuals that they transport it, so. In total for December, transfers alone were a hundred and sixty and December, two hundred and eight. Um, so you subtract the, did you do math, when you track the thirty four, um, sorry, the fourteen calls and the thirty seven calls. All those other people may have had transport to the uh, R C M P under I P B A, had they not had other places to go. Um, they're also issuing uh tickets while they're on their patrol, so for December, in total, they issued twenty one tickets and seven in January. Um. Also during their shift, um, they do this bulk of any uh substances that might um. Go might take to for. To talk, to become intoxicated, um, so liquor itself, they. Hundred and ten in December and three hundred in January, so they would have taken it, open liquor, they would dispose of it very on site. Um, and then the list goes down to who the different other um. Substances that they were taking in quarters.
Any questions, counsel, for Sonya? Counselor Coburn?
Okay, thank you, Governor, this is not about the, this is about C F O, how many we have, three?
Yeah.
And you're going both two, you can't add first and both by themselves, right?
Correct.
I mean, that's not already working.
Right.
I mean, next are beyond road.
Uh, they work five days, they're thirty five hour work week, so they work five days a week.
And you got a three, and you got three people after each time.
Correct.
Two vehicles. I love this great time, huh, but. Why don't you set up a schedule where there's only two on a. Well, four day on, four day off. To work, to work one. More production for the community, not less costs. I love this, you're telling me that's not enough.
That's fine, I I.
It's an idea, right, to think about it.
Yeah, Counselor Coburn, and to that point, they are trying to act that we build the fourth. So the creativity of the shifts is until work gets built, but that's good information to take back for sure. Any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Tom.
Thank you. Uh, question about I P D A. You have thirty seven on January. All the thirty seven, how many of them are local or how come people come here?
I don't have that with me, um, that's something that um. That would be identified when they launch them at the R C M P, so they would have to put a few people work at the R C M P indicating of, on the C thirteen uh, where they're from. So that would be something that we could get on from their safety.
Okay, another question is open later. This uh, the visitor come in and open the little or the local people? Of this three hundred on January. The number you have.
It could be people from in town, people from out of town, um, they don't keep track of the people's things that they're actually disposing the liquor. It could be a group of fifteen, twenty people that they might come up on and they're, they're drinking and they have liquor they poured out, so at that point, they're not. They're not arresting them, they're not fully, they're not intoxicated, the danger to themselves or somebody else.
Here you have the line.
They don't, no, they don't keep track of that.
So there's a one border down there, twenty people, so you consider two hundred or the twenty or just one?
One.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Something, one more, um. Uh, the um. With your resource. Um. I know it's gonna be more extra work around for you, but would you, is there or is there or would you guys be able to? Send the reports to the reserves that are, so that's done. They could say. Thirty five offered house, four to six, twenty three mountain house. And twenty four, you know? And it's where, okay, we have thirty thirty intoxicated people from your reserve. And I said, it may be. Twenty six drug related. Is is that part of reporting or would that be too much for you guys or you don't do that?
You have it, um, that's not something that we have, that is sending in that information um, to apply to the community.
Just to clarify for you, Councilor McCuyver, after maybe a year of that data, that would be something that mayor, from the mayor's office or that mayor and council. Could meet with that particular chief or chief in council to have that discussion once there's some some data. It wouldn't be a direction of our director to just send that information. Um, it would be the direction of mayor and council if they wanted to meet with that community, with that community leadership to go through, there's one in particular that's. Always coming up on the data or anything, but that can be something that mayor and council can decide if they want to look at having those communications with. Oh, my communities and and chiefs and councils. But, and um, I think we should, right? To inform. Our surrounding communities, what they're they're doing here, why our current crime rate is so high. Find find solutions for them, or they can help us find solutions for their people that are here. Okay, thank you, so if you can start to maybe accumulate that data to share just with mayor and council. Thanks, Sonya, Counselor Wong.
Thank you. Uh, question about the shift, uh. Right now, you say we only have three C S O. Right? So, but there's two vehicles on the street or during the shift, right? So that means two in one, one in one, right? So what is the one? Can do with uh? No, I mean, can you split the ship at that?
So what happens right now, so two, two or one vehicle, yeah, one sort of, they're probably still covering double the um. Things, I guess, so if the one C S O always buy it, that will be easy, something, he will call the other child radio and then they come over, then. Deal with that situation about.
So let's say that one with the two see the situation, do they still call the one come over there or they will take care of it because? So that means the one is kind of like, you need the other two.
Issue to, maybe do most of the things, right, so they, it's still in the other side, it's another world.
The reason I asking this question, I wanna utilize the manpower. I wanna see what is feasible, what is uh 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 more more safe to do that. So it seems like the one is kind of like you rely the other two, but the two don't rely on the one. So it's kind of like, you know what I mean, it's not bank or above what I'm looking at. So maybe you should look into maybe get the. They pretty much can do a lot of bylaw job too, right? So would it be possible, think about this outside of, maybe get a bylaw officer. To do together some thing or some shift, that we, that we, they still have a pair. Then you can split the ship cover more. Hours than just the forty, that's the only thing I would get there.
Um, they do actually, the C S O is, um, when, that's more of, if I only have one C S O, I'm monitoring one out. Um, and the other one couldn't take the train, this three day training course, they're probably just three days. So for two days on Thursday, he's actually working a shift with a uh, one loss. So they won't be driving the C S O car because he can't. When they're driving the C S O cars, um, there's that expectation of the community that the C S O, that they should stop and call them. So when a C S O is not uh efficient, they film and not really divide itself to actually. Drive the uh, inspection truck. So tomorrow. He will not be driving a C S O car, he will be driving a new specialist. Which is second, and they'll be trying to help, and then file us that they're probably in that aspect, but not doing any of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for this? Year up.
Bill C seventy five, Deputy Mayor.
Seventy five, good one. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Any other comments or questions, we're good with this? Okay, appreciate your report. The votes of you, thank you for your report tonight, five point two, we are gonna have a public safety report, all about safety tonight. You. For Chief Steve, for the public. We're on you, and it's not even, talk to you, Sonya.
You're on there.
I'm on there.
Yeah.
So for our public safety, uh, we're currently reviewing, um, the vehicle fire file, we just received it back, uh. Myself and the inspector and the program manager, uh. Reviewed it, uh, couple days now, there's six hours to go. We finally finished it today. So now our focus would be going back to the lawyer to speak, um, hoping to have a meeting with him, so we can. Bring it to council once we done, so we can finalize the taxi by law in the next, in the coming weeks. Um. Currently in the taxi, there's inspections of all the taxis, um, they're now completed, um, we did remove one taxi, which has been the safety insert of the vehicle. Uh, I believe it's now to be in that one road. And we have a taxi course that is manual for approach and that course is as well. Um, animal control, we have two pit bulls that were accounted, uh, pit bulls are not allowed in. City of Thompson. So those two pit bulls were removed from the community and they're moved to, I believe, the rescue issue, uh. Rescue center outside. Um, and we also dealt with a um. Simular dog bite, uh, so it's adhering now to um. Those X that have been uh, that have been destroyed. Um, the animal control officer is also attending different schools, if he's gone to Jennifer, the Westwood's. Um. Hurt one and hurt her as well, um, to do presentations on pet safety. And he has some more actions that are upcoming, I think he's going to scan some neighbors, there's a few hundred ones that, that I can definitely end up following from pet safety, he's all safety looking forward. He's had, uh, for his dad, uh, again, the animal control officer is filling in as well, uh, on the bylaw, so he's kind of doing two jobs, he's got a vacant position. Bylaws after. It's currently vacant, and again, currently actively looking to pull that position. So complaints from the community, uh, or citizen complaints, that would be. Somebody calling in saying that the neighbor is blowing the snow over on my lawn or something like that, those types of complaints. So he's had thirty six of those, uh, last month, encountered three dogs, uh, one cats. And one unlicensed animal, um, issued a ticket. And he had a licensed dogs currently in the city of one hundred fifty one and fourteen. The discount ended in February, February the first. So our numbers aren't, they're not anywhere near to where we were last year, so we know that there's a lot more cats in the community. Uh, that what our license, city brand, um, so we are doing, um. We're gonna be doing some, um, education that two one should have your cats registered, trying to do some promotional stuff. Um, and again, like I had mentioned before, the bylaw position is currently still vacant, um. So these, um, the statistics I have here are actually from the animal control officer that. Issue ticket. So littering ticket is issued to, again, so. Onto others, somebody else's party, it was, it was two, uh, this garbage recycling, there are eight. Thirteen, uh, people who park on the street for the garbage day, six handicapped tickets, two no parking or improper garbage. And seventeen non-ticket, non-ticket complaints, there was seventeen of those and three of the tickets that were issued that month to you guys. For launching screen of this.
Thank you, any questions or comments for Director, Counselor Wong?
Yeah, I have a question about the uh, ticket. I believe on our piece and fine, uh, store removal, there's a ticket for for park vehicle on the street, right? I'd like to see that happen. Because uh, they cause a lot of trouble for 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 the smoker. And also choke off the street eventually. After a few times, you could clean up property and become problem, so I'd like to see that one.
To be able to have it on the street on snow.
I believe that is the piece I'm fine. When it's snow, we will, just like the garbage can save, but I don't know what the process, the what the protocol, are you supposed to give a. A sign, uh, prior to the snow removal and all that, go with the the proper protocol. Just don't go and take it without giving a notice, so that that would be my my recommendation, thank you.
Any else, Counselor McCuyver?
I have one, thank you. I have a complaint sent to me regarding the snow clearing. And it's where they're clearing the residential area. So. What is it, greater order, whatever. We get a community anyways went by and. Did a driveway, just covered the whole driveway, the car couldn't get out because there's a pile of snow there. This is your problem. You know, I don't know whose problem it is, but that's the majority of emails I get.
The, I would ask to refer that to Public Works, uh, that would be the only, this problem is, is only works probably.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's. You get twelve of them a day or something. And that's why, why should that happen? It's where they're, they clear here, lift up here and then put it back down, start with that, you know, what it's, where they clear right over the driveway, they leave it there. And now it's the home, home, homeowners. Um, you need to try and take their own car out.
I just wanna go to the city manager, he has his hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, with respect to the council's complaints that they're receiving, uh, we've been hearing a number of those of late, um, if you'd like to collect those. And forward them to Public Works and copy myself, and we will follow up with them on that. That would be something that we would address through the Public Works uh, report. But we can also bring it up with the director much more quickly, see if there's an issue that we need to uh, address.
I have addressed it once, and should put it on a budget. I wasn't here about that.
Any other comments about the public safety report? Okay, seeing that, we're gonna go to the Thompson Fire and Emergency Report with Chief Lloyd. Hey, finally got you there, great, great time, sorry.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, just uh, uh, side note, before we actually get into the reports. Uh, I must apologize about how you all report sent up to Tammy in time for. For all to review, but uh, there was a request about a week and a half ago. Uh, from my director, Sonya, with respect to calls for service between one fifteen Churchill. And. Five oh four Princeton. Uh, for a five month period, so the stats that I compiled. Uh, started in September first twenty twenty one and ran till January thirty first. Twenty twenty two, and what we've done, I've combined the two civic addresses of one fifteen Churchill. And thirty nine nickel, our total uh, number of calls for service was a hundred and fifty three. Which equated to four percent of our total calls over a five month period. Uh, from September twenty one to January twenty two. And starting at September first twenty twenty two to January thirty first twenty twenty three. The calls have gone up significantly uh, to a hundred and ninety seven. Um, bear in mind. Uh, October sixteenth was in fact our first call for service to the Eden Center five oh four Princeton. Um, which equates to roughly five percent of total calls for that time period, interestingly enough. Uh, for patient refusals on the, on the first portion of the request, we had seven. Patient refusals, uh, we had six noise and fouls. And we had seven uh, patients that were handled by other agencies, whether it be the C S Os. Or in fact, the R C M P. Uh, we had a significant uptake of refusals on September twenty two to January twenty three. Of thirty nine, and the only thing I can attribute that to is the fact that we have. A learning congregation of people under the one roof that five oh four Princeton. Uh, three noise and two other agents, so again. Um, I apologize for not having that, those stats prepared. Um. Moving along right now into our the fire and ambulance responses, the third, the third page. Um, again, there there's a typo, January twenty twenty two should have been January twenty twenty three. Uh, we had currently, we had forty five responses, uh. Uh, we had currently, we had forty five responses uh for for the month of January. Uh, year to date over last year was fifty six, so we've got a decrease of twenty percent. Our ambulance responses, uh, again, we've uh gone up uh just over eleven percent of six hundred eighty four. Uh, calls for for service for the month of January compared to six hundred sixteen calls. Uh, for January twenty twenty two. On the inspections and prevention sides, we had three inspections. Uh, for the month of January compared to eighteen in twenty twenty two and nothing on the special permits. Or fire inspections for the month of January. Also, uh, in the month of January, members of T F P S uh. Uh, completed their annual A C L S course, which was held at the Mary Pesci War Room at the T R C C. On the sixteenth and seventeenth of January, those members that could have attended, basically the officers. Uh, we uh we managed to get the majority done and and whatnot, so all passed uh with uh. By color, so I'm I'm pleased to uh to report that. There's anything else? I have nothing else.
Any questions or comments, Councilor Wong?
Just uh, can you still send us that report already? All right, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? You're good. Getting off good on this one. Okay, we're going to move along to development. Six point one is a memo from the Director of Development Technical Services in regards to bylaw. Two zero three three dash two zero two three being a zoning bylaw amendment to rezone land in the city of Thompson from a public institution zone. The public institution university zone. Go to the Director of Development.
Uh, the city has received an application for a property, which is three oh five Thompson Drive North. Uh, that that property, which is the old Salvation Army property, is currently for sale. Uh, the respective buyers looking at the site and looking at. Uh, making some changes to the site, but in order to make it uh meet their purpose, uh, they would need a zoning bylaw amendment. So uh in review, uh, in discussions with them and in discussions with the planner. Uh, it is felt that the the property would be better zone as a public institutional university. As the proposed plan for the site is a uh a multifamily dwelling. A dormitory and the development of an educational uh center. Uh, most likely to stem with science, technology, engineering, math, school. All of those uses are permitted within the public institutional universities. So again, we've we do this with uh Mr. Brett Mack or Mr. Cliner. And it is felt that by resorting it from public institutional to public institutional university, it will allow this a potential buyer to. To take that site and make it what they what they are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the Director, Councilor Mark?
Well, I'd be happy to see this. Sad Salvation Army is gone, but I'd be glad to make the sort of change. Uh, for multifamily dwell, especially when it's in their own parker and U C N already. Educational institutions.
Here. Any other comments? Councilor Wong?
When you say you change to the zoning to uh. So will it be affected the the one next to it? Just one property, change it to that.
Yeah, this is specific to one property. Not the entire like neighborhood or just just that one property.
Is that we are under condition or just total change to this?
They would just institution, just be changed to public institution university.
Okay, so it's council wanting to give direction and move this on to the council agenda. Everybody's okay with moving forward? Show of hands. Okay, you have direction. Thank you. We'll go to number eight under legislative. We have eight point one, a letter from, oh no, sorry. Back it up to recreation. Seven point one got a memo from the Director of Recreation Community Services in regards to leading fees from the Thompson Festival of the Arts. I will go to the Director of Recreation.
Uh, so the Thompson Festival of the Arts had requested. How slowly uh one hundred percent of the in support are about coming. On show that everybody one day sixteen to a year. To use the C A that the regis just playing the artist. Audience participants, but visual arts for over thousand students served on them, including school district to regulate. The rent is all in any home with children. So I might identify the cost that would be for the four day rental of the C A would be seventeen percent point eight. Uh, fifty percent was cost that be thirty four sixty four. Uh, they would set up the tables of uh, they only need a few tables. They would set that up themselves. Um, just to add, they've never been charged in the past. This is something that has been waived one hundred percent before by council. However, council. Uh, there are changes made to the meeting of these policy in May of two thousand and eighteen. Which would have been the last year that they actually had their month event. So. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware that they they would be expected one hundred percent. Um, I did provide to them though that obviously updated we being a piece and they would be prepared to.
Thank you for the explanation. Mayor Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking uh the cost that uh you have shown here. Are they related to the requested hours that they wanted for, or is it for the whole day? Are we basing uh the costs on?
It is just for their hours. Um. However, they they want it for the full day. They're going to be leaving all of their stuff there. So I give them quote for the whole sixteen hours level kind of the center is all of it. Um, so it's just for their actual hours that they're going to be in.
Thank you.
Councilor one mark.
When there's costs associated with with using the C A, it has been written up in the people. So we wouldn't have to have our staff there because of the emolga plant, because they left their stuff there. We just have to make sure they don't attend there. And in those other hours, right? Like, so we're not going to be paying for staff to be there. When they're not.
Correct. They're being well, I was in the arena at the time, so there would be money for.
Um, thank you.
Any else?
I have a few comments. Um, in side B, I plan operator, we also will have a thousand students, so we will have. Uh, have to pay for maybe extra janitorial or maintenance or whatever that may be. Um, for me, the policy is policy. So I would support the fifty percent going back to them with that. If there was a make or break for them to host the event, then they always come back to us. Um, I am thrilled that this is going to be taking place again. It's been many years of a gap and it's great for our youth and those even the adult. Events that take place. So I support the event, but um to support the policy that was put in place. It would be the fifty percent for me at this time. I'll go to Councilor Oberdorfer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, yeah, I would be in support of of the fifty percent as well as per the um. The bylaw. Um. We just recently uh passed a motion for another event. Uh, and we also supported fifty percent. So I think it would be unfair to consider uh supporting more. So. Uh, for this event. So with that being said, um, I'm in favor of uh moving forward at fifty percent. Thank you.
You, Mayor Smith.
Sorry, we forgot to lower my hand.
Sandra, lower your hand. Everybody lower your hands. Sorry. Councilor MacArthur?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the two of them. Like a policy, the policy we already passed. That we got paid a fifty percent. Uh, with their stuff, they're they're leaving their. Things in the in. The T R C C, what if what if they lose something or what if something, like who's responsible or not responsible?
Who would not be responsible? No, the doors would be locked. You would lock the doors. Uh, there's still a walking trap, a walking hat. He's still with our crime rate. Yeah, but their items would, once they set it up, it's the immigration of the event. But you're you're correct. I mean, that is in the room and the C A and we know where there is a walking path, so a lot will happen still.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so Councilor Cooper, you're up.
Uh, yes, I'm I support this, but I'm the. Like the Council Orbiter said. Lot of people asking for reductions these days. Can we really afford it? No, we don't make our money down here anyhow. And I I see these things, you know, they say they don't make more money or whatever, but I we don't see your books. But it it, you know, I think we've got to take the rebook that our. Policy on giving people breaks. When we got to assume that we're putting money into all the time. Always good that the organization's in there. It's a lot better than that in there than that in empty. Right? But uh, we have a look at this policy again, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and that's also a budget discussion. Let's see the those numbers at budget. So do I hear moving this forward to this would be a resolution of council for next Monday. Everybody's in favor of that? All right, we have enough to move this forward. Thank you. Under legislative, we have eight point one, a letter from Matt of the Public Insurance in regards to the rate increases. There's a letter attached. Uh, I'm not sure if it's speaking to this, city manager or.
Yes, I can speak to that, Deputy Mayor. Um, this is a letter that we've received from Public Insurance. It would have been sent. To the A M M, to the President of A M M regarding the uh the rates or callouts. Um, basically updating what the rates are. The only thing that we'd have to do administratively is bring forward a change to the fees and fines. So as we be bringing that forward this year as part of budget, we would milk the fees and fines and those changes be reflected moving forward.
Thank you. So I take it we're just receiving this information for council.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, I have one quick question and I decide we're still here, Staff Sergeant, because how it says in here, I've heard this come up in this last, the last month and a half about securing the scene. For motor vehicle accidents. Do like, I talked to city manager about this, so. Does M P I cover those costs of that motor vehicle accident that is sin being secured? Because somehow I feel like some municipalities are billing M P I for that. You know what I mean?
You don't track that. I mean, the only way typically would be security, you know, it's the same here as the. We would be able to free uh maybe that a serious injury or a breakdown, we obviously may have secured for longer period. Or traffic analyst to their their analysis of the scene. As far as the damage goes. My knowledge, you know, they'll back it. Which is a ground corporation by the province anyways. So that's where the internal process that I'm not aware of. I've never heard this.
Okay, either why until this last month and a half, and now it's identified in this letter that they're increasing. The their rate for securing the scene. Quite very interesting.
Now, whether the the viability insurance attached that driver covers that offer on a show?
I don't know either. Okay, no, I just thought I would ask if you knew, uh, city manager has a hand up.
Yes, I believe this is something that we could go to the fire chief, but as well, this may be something when we're having discussions on the changes that are available um for community safety officers. So that if there were more safety officers, some of the other roles that they could play, potentially holding scene security or others, maybe a chargeable matter back to M P I.
Okay, fair. Thanks for that. Counselor, one mark, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that we check into that, see if there's some kind of insurance that we've got taking advantage of that could cover something like costs. And it's a great idea that we can use our C S O string that it might be a we didn't generate enough funds to get more C S Os. And we'll also get paid, but just something that we can ask questions about it.
Oh, it's good. I just noticed it in the letters. I thought I'd bring it up. Okay, this is for information for council. Councilor MacArthur, step over for a second. Do you want to note that? Eight point two is an email from. Um, M A D D against drunk driving requesting official support for their twenty twenty three campaign. I'm not sure which director is linked to, wants to speak to it.
Um, I can speak to this, Deputy Mayor. This again is a. It's information and a request from others against drinking and driving, their annual publication, requesting the city of Thompson partake as part of the publication. They've enclosed their advertising rates. It's really a discussion for council if you'd like to get involved and advertise in their their publication. I'm not aware if we've done this in the past or not, um, but it's it's a request that you received from others against drinking and driving.
Thank you, city manager. For council information, I don't do not believe we have in the past. You've gotten a request, but we have not in the past supported it. So we we always the rationale was to support a local campaign or looking local. This is more the national campaign. That's correct. Anybody have any comments? All right, no comments. So do you guys want to support this or do you not want to? Okay, so Councilor Wong?
Yeah, since we don't have the past practice, so I I don't think we want to break that otherwise could be more and more time. So that's why, thank you.
Okay, so um. Oh, is it consensus of council not to support it? Councilor Oberdorfer, did you want to support this or no? Okay, so there's a direction that uh won't be supporting the national campaigns. Thank you. Eight point three is an invite from U C S Truth and Reconciliation Gathering Committee inviting mayor council to the seventh annual Truth and Reconciliation Gathering Conference. In the paw I do with you, you stand as well to this. City, oh, Mayor Smith has her hand up. Speak to this.
Yeah, it's a, it's definitely something that we should partake in. It just so happens that. It is happening during P D A C uh with the city manager and myself will be out of town, out of the city. So I would suggest that there is a alternate persons that can go to this. Uh, I have taken part in the past and I uh suggest we do it again. Thank you.
I think it's important for someone from council to attend this. Um, March eighth is also the R C and P unveiling of. Uh, statue. Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Yeah.
Especially cause for recognition, uh, petition of their.
Great, so I'll be attending that and Mayor Smith is at P D A C. So if council, we could check your calendars and. Um, could let Tammy know if you'd like to attend. Uh, this, it is a it's event to take part. We do need to have city of Thompson representation there. So if you can send that to Tammy if your schedule permits. Mayor Smith, you got your hand up still or you got to take it down? Okay, all right, all right. Can I get a move or two adjourned? Oh, sorry.
A bunch of meaning on this right too.
All right.
On the eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I need to move her to adjourn. That's one mark. Councilor Cooper and all of the there.
Hi.
Thank you. Stay with doubles, you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
I just want to.